So technically, this is the way. That's what we talked about last week.
Okay.
But I put it on the agenda. You have to do the type of information.
John, did you like that? Do you have a live question right now? Do you want to wait till we're in the meeting?
We're live.
I'm asking so everybody can hear the answer. Not right now. Okay.
You ready, Michelle?
I am recording, yes.
Okay. I'd like to pause order. Please rise with the flag of allegiance and hold the signs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have a roll call.
Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Rushton?
Present.
Chairman Bonnick?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Sutis Little? Do you have your volume on? Where yours?
She's there. I'll let you hear you. Yeah.
Commissioner Sutis Little?
He doesn't hear us.
Yes.
No, I don't.
Commissioner Sutis Little?
Oh, there she is.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner Alba Algueria?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. So then we have approval of the minutes. We only have one set here. On the green page, Commissioner Lautner.
Yes. I would move to approve the minutes from the special session of Wednesday, December 30th, 2020.
Support. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you for that. So then we have the approval of the agenda. We have one late addition here. Northwest Regional Airport Authority membership update. Commissioner Russell?
I move to approve the agenda as presented and amended.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you for that. Then that brings us to public comment. If you have public comment at this time, the number is 231-256-8109.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While we're waiting for a phone call in, I would like to ask our clerk if she would read the email that we all received from Commissioner Tony Anne Sorgi that shares his views on goals and also on other items, so masks. Would this be a good time to do that now?
Yes, if she has it available.
Well, we could attach it to the minutes, too.
Excuse me?
Oh, we could attach it to the minutes, too. I think he knows.
Yes. If she doesn't have it, we'll attach it to the minutes. You do have it? Okay. While we're waiting for a phone call, we'll have this spread.
From Grand Terrors County? Tony Anne Sorgi of Grand Terrors County.
Go ahead.
Okay.
The following is my public comment for Tuesday's regular board meeting. I wanted all members, board members, to have a copy in advance as I'm not trying to surprise anyone, and I hope you will have time to consider these comments. In addition, by sending a copy to Michelle, she will have an actual copy of my comments to use in the minutes. Thank you. My name is Tony Anne Sorgi, a taxpayer in Elmo and Soul Townships. I would like to comment on two issues that should be before the board. The first is setting goals. I believe that setting goals is simply logical. All of the commissioners are or were successful small business owners or administrators, and all the commissioners had to set goals for their businesses or organizations or they would not have been successful, be it farming, professional, retail, or education. If setting goals is good for business, it should be good for the business of government. While I don't know if Ben Franklin actually said it, the following quote has been repeated since his time. "If you fail to plan, then you plan to fail." Please continue to be good planners and at least set some goals. This doesn't have to be done tonight, but should be done sometime in the first quarter. The second issue concerns commissioners wearing masks while attending meetings at the governmental center. There are two good reasons for doing so. Whether you believe that masks are a benefit during the pandemic or not, after all the deaths, I assume there is no doubt by any commissioner that the pandemic is real. The first reason is simple perception. All employees and visitors to the governmental center are required to wear masks. All other elected officials wear masks in the government center if for no other reason than as a leadership example to the employees under them. For a county commissioner to say that they don't have to wear a mask as an elected official smacks of entitlement and is not how a leadership act or be perceived.
Sure. Okay.
The second reason concerns decency. If I put myself in the shoes of someone who has weighed the evidence and sources and then decides that wearing a mask provides absolutely no benefit at all during the pandemic, I might decide that not wearing a mask is the right thing to do as a matter of political principle. This, however, only makes sense if we ignore the personal impact on those who may believe the opposite, that after weighing the evidence and other sources decides that there is at least some benefit to wearing a mask. For those individuals, there is real stress and fear from others not wearing masks and particular anguish for those who have lost loved ones to the virus. Someone may look at a commissioner not wearing a mask as making a political statement at the expense of the pain of others and making a conclusion on that commissioner's lack of compassion. This is not my experience of Leelanau County commissioners over the last five years. I have seen every one of the commissioners I served with show at different times and circumstances that they truly care about others. They have repeatedly shown compassion and sympathy toward others, including those on the opposite end of the political spectrum. I truly believe that every commissioner, including the newly elected ones, would not subject themselves to the job if they didn't care about others. As simple act of decency, everyone should be willing to bear the minor inconvenience of wearing a mask during this pandemic if for no other reason than out of compassion for those suffering pain and fear. I suggest all commissioners wear a mask, although genuine speaking and drinking while in the government center. It is the right thing to do, whether you believe or not, that they provide any benefit at all. A commissioner could certainly clarify that their wearing a mask does not signify their personal agreement with the epidemic benefit of wearing a mask, but that they are doing so out of respect and compassion for those suffering from the effects of the pandemic. Please show yourselves to be leaders and caring people. I know you to be. Please wear a mask while attending meetings at the government center. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment.
Thank you. Little gentleman here, calm. Okay, Victor, go ahead, please.
Wes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. You are on topic. January 7th. Commissioners split. Saturday 14th. Commissioners clash. I want us to go from split to unite and from clash to build. And I want to help in that process. To unite, we really have to have a clear understanding of purpose and a unifying vision. To build, we have to understand the roadway towards the vision and go and get going and into it. In all of this, three things are essential. Vision, core values, and a process of thinking, ideation, and active listening. If I were to propose something, I will propose that we do and get into a program to follow the following steps. One, overview of our legislative mandates. Binding the framework, binding framework. Number two, developing core values. Agreement amongst behavioral boundaries. Really developing a vision which is unifying, energizing. And fourth, intensive ideation from core values and vision to action statements. I have had extensive experience in facilitating problem solving sessions, strategic plans, new product developments, and the like in academia, in churches, in a professional society, industry, and in other settings. So I want you to commission, assign a small group of workers to propose a structured process to build and unite. And that could be, for instance, Janik, Russell, and beyond Bonnick and me. We will hopefully come up with something that will be an adequate process and come back and propose it to the board of commissioners. You are not working for the Republican Party. You are not working for the Democratic Party. You are not working for an independent grouping. You're working for the citizens in your district. So to identify your allegiance in the newspaper to a party should not be the case. The district should be the defender. These are all things, are things that we should be addressing to have a, not only a unified, a unified board moving to exciting areas, but also citizenry is applauding and following alongside. And that's all I have. Apparently, I was unable to get into the streaming, see my, into the video here. So without seeing you, I cannot identify you. But I thank you all for your patience with me. I am committed. Hey, this is just volunteer efforts that we're talking about. I want to see us really go away from crashing and splitting. This is not where we want to be in this beautiful county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there's any other public comment, please call 231-256-8109.
Chairman, did he say his name?
I know who it was.
Victor Goldsmith.
Did he say that? I mean, I know.
Yes, I think at the beginning. At the beginning, he did. I believe.
I didn't want to put it in.
He, I believe he did not, but just go ahead, Victor.
Okay.
So.
I was gonna throw my, I could tell who it was.
Yeah, you should put his name in.
Are you comfortable?
He just forgot, I believe.
You comfortable with public comment? Okay. Go ahead, ma'am. Okay, ma'am, before you go, could you turn down the TV or wherever you're watching? Because there's a delay here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Diane Conners, and I live just outside of Cedar. And I'm calling just because last August, I wrote to encourage the board to pass the resolution condemning racism. And I said, Ben, let's take care of our children of all races so that they can grow up feeling proud and safe in our community. And I very much appreciated the response that my commissioner, Melinda Lautner, sent to me at the time. She spoke from my heart and said she hopes that someday we could have good, tough dialogue. And we can. You started it by passing the resolution, and I thank you so much for that. And I look forward to you taking enough steps for carrying it out. I believe it will shine such a positive light on our community as you do and make it a place that we all will continue to love and even more deeply. Please do pass goals and make the anti-racism resolution implementation one of your goals. I was struck recently by realizing that Michigan was established in 1837, which is the year after the 1836 treaty with Todd. So that's one great reason to do a land acknowledgement at meetings without the Todd's, without a "have" Michigan or Leelanau County. So I'm white, and I ask you to help to continue the conversation in Leelanau County. Think about and listen to people of color and in a public way so that we all can learn more. If the goal is to learn about and reduce racism, it's not about you or me. It's about learning more, always learning more, and then finding the ways that we can make a further difference for our children and our community. And what I say is not about you or about me. I mean, it's not about anybody feeling sentences or anything about that, about things that we might learn that we don't even realize about. It's about us to make a difference. And I know that you can make a difference. And I hope that you will in the coming year. And thank you for all you've done so far. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Again, if there's any public comment, please call 231-256-8109. The line is open. Well, if anybody calls in the next few minutes or next minute or so, we'll move on. But I think we can sit there. Okay. We'll hear. I'll put your on the speaker. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners. We need to enter right today about the expert.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening. This is Dana Gessinger. I'm calling to thank Michelle Crocker. She's very efficient and honest for the election. And I'm sorry that threats have been made against the government. Don't even, and I'm hoping that you're all safe this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the line is open. If you wanted to call for a public comment, the number is 231-256-8109. Yeah, certainly go to YouTube. Type in "Leland County Commissioners", and you should be able to get there. Okay. Okay. I can't do it if we have other people that are watching it, so I'm not sure what issues. Okay. Actually, I have to go to the agenda. Click on, connect to. Okay. Well, the easiest way, if you don't, just go to YouTube, type in "Leland County Commissioners", and you'll be able to reach. You can try that way, also. So you can try it. Okay. That was not called a comment. It's fine.
Just a service.
All right. Trying to help someone here. All right, then, we move on then to communications, proclamations, and presentations. Yeah, just have a quick update. I want all of you to meet one of our newer Japanese deputies. Sturzer, right?
Sturzer, yes.
Sturzer, you can come up here. I don't think many of you know him because he works mostly evenings. Been about a year, so if you want to have a seat there and just take a few minutes to introduce yourself. We don't normally get to meet some of our Japanese who work the evening hours. It's like a big reaction.
Yeah. All right. Good evening, y'all. You mind if I take my mask off? All right. So my name is Deputy Sturzer, Terrence Sturzer. Everybody calls me TJ. I've been a resident here now for about 12 years. I live in Cleveland Township. I have four children, all went to Glen Lake. I've been working with a tribe for 23 years prior to this. So law enforcement now for nine years. I have to say, this is much better on this side. I do like it. You know, I'm grateful being an employee here at Leelanau County. I really enjoy it. I am a tribal member as well, so I plan on staying here minimum 25 years at least. So I just have to say it's a great job, so. I don't know what else.
How long have you been here with us?
I've been here now for almost a year. I started March 3rd of last year.
Almost a year.
Yeah. So March 3rd this year will be my one-year mark. Yeah. Yeah. It's a good thing.
Were you in law enforcement for the tribe?
I was for seven years. Prior to that, 15 years, I worked for gaming and then mostly like maintenance-type work. You know, jack of all trades-type thing, so.
Now, do you work nights all the time? Well, I mean, this round of shifts.
Yeah. Yeah. I've been on nights for probably the last 10 years, 11 years since I've been here, so.
It's pretty tough for the family.
It is. It is. Yeah. You know, I've been married for 23 years, so I have a good support system at home, I have to say. And without my wife, it would be very difficult to do so. So she helps me out a lot.
Your wife's supposed to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, I try to help her out as much as I can, too, so.
So your children are ages?
I have, my oldest is 23. Then I have a 21-year-old, 18-year-old, and my youngest is 12 now. And she's my only daughter.
So you've been through the fire with three. You've got one.
Oh, yeah.
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 It's pretty tough out there in these times.
It is. My oldest is in the military. He's currently stationed in Virginia. He's actually starting EOD school in February, and he'll be moved to Florida. So it's a big, yeah, very proud. A good parent, proud parent, I'll tell you what.
You're welcome, Neil.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for serving our needs here this evening.
Oh, I absolutely. I appreciate this. I really do, so.
It's easy duty tonight.
So far, yeah. Well, good. Thank you. Thank you very much, and nice meeting you.
Thank you. Yeah. Did you have a question here for Commissioner Alblair?
No, we just said it was very nice to meet him.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Nice meeting you guys, too. Thanks.
Great day, but I feel like I met you.
All right. So then that would bring us to the action items, the Conservation District work orders. Commissioner Lautner?
Yes. I would move to approve the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners. I would move that the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners approve the 2021 Conservation District Work Order, number one, Conservation Education and Technical Assistance, and the amount not to exceed $40,343 of funds to come from 801.
Support. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Continue. I would move that the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners approve the 2021 Work Order Number Two, Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control, funds to come from the collection of county approved permit erosion fees. Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0.
I would move that the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners approve the 2021 Work Order Number Three, Water Quality Monitoring, in an amount not to exceed $5,000, funds to come from 801.
Support. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes 7-0.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rushton?
I would move that the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners approve the transfer of ownership of Nico to Deputy Greg Horncle upon Nico's retirement from the Leelanau County Sheriff's Office in the current unit with Deputy Horncle, assuming responsibility for cost of care at a cost not to exceed $1.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Commissioner Rushton?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Leelanau County Board of Commissioners approve a three-year contract with advanced correctional health care or inmate medical services in the amount of $40,901.72. Has this gone before corporate?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Pending the approval from corporate counsel and, of course, our board chair will sign.
Support.
I really was amazed at the prices when they put those in there. That is was so reasonable for us. I mean, so they, he's done a very good job top this.
Yes, he has.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes 7-0. Thank you. And that brings us then to a board of goals. Commissioner Lautner?
Okay. I would recommend, I would move Leelanau County Board of Commissioners that for the 2021 Board of Commissioners, do not set goals as a whole. Second.
Mr. Chair? I move that we postpone this matter until we have a work session to talk about our priorities and our goals. I'll speak to that if I get a second.
Okay. We have a motion already on the table.
This supersedes that.
It would have to be amended to the goal.
Now, I'm moving to postpone discussion.
Okay. All right.
I will second.
So we have a second, yes. Is there any comments? Commissioner Alblair? Was that just to second it or?
It was to second it, and if you'd like me to make a comment, I'm very willing.
I.
I think I get to speak to that.
I think Commissioner Russell has to do it first.
And I think there's a point of order in this process. I don't know that discussion is allowed.
Yes, I think it is.
I think it is.
Okay.
It says it's debatable.
Yes.
Okay. My mistake.
So my rationale for doing this is this Board of Commissioners set priorities the last couple of years for housing, substance abuse, and keep cutting the cost of MERS, bringing down the debt. We've got those things in the works, and I think we need to see those to be in. And we also, in the midst, are talking about a second planet. So because we're not really creating new priorities, we're reaffirming, I think, or should be reaffirming what we said was important last year, but we're not there yet. So I would like to have a discussion in either a special session or the executive board to talk specifically about those areas that we said almost unanimously a year ago we were committed to. And then I think we could unanimously approve those as goals for the current year.
Mr. Alblair?
I believe we've also made a commitment to continue work on the anti-racial bias issue. It's very important for us to follow through on our commitments. So it would seem that that should be a goal as well. So in addition to continuing the work that we started, and you guys did so well last year, but is not completed, needs continued focus, we should add that. I believe we also heard from our community pretty strongly. We represent them. You should listen.
Commissioner Lautner?
I don't think anyone plans on stopping the forward progress of any of the items that Commissioner Russell spoke about.
That Commissioner Russell spoke about. So I don't think there is any danger of any of those projects stalling out at all. I firmly believe that, so there is really no need to set them as a goal as we are already moving forward on all of those items.
Commissioner Launer? Last Tuesday, I did say I'm for goals. I'm sadly to say that coming in here as a new commissioner on January fifth, that we didn't have goals. Every board I've been in, every business day has goals. And I feel that. You as commissioners should have those goals in place in October. Before we came in, before Gwen and I came in, you guys should have had goals already set. The problem I have right now is, we're at January nineteenth. I don't want to spend the next three months fighting over goals for two thousand twenty-one when we could be working on. The goals we already have, but we know it needs to move forward. And we have anti-racism, we've been working on for six months, nothing to show for it. I mean, we're making progress, but we need to show some more progress. And from what I've been told, we have septic ordinance that we've been working on for nineteen ninety-four, or since nineteen ninety-four. How many more decades is it going to take before we get one, or come to a solution for the problem? So what I'm suggesting is, I'm not against the goals, I'm just against doing goals right now for two thousand twenty-one. Because we need to work on some other stuff, but what I'm suggesting is, is in September. We submit our goals, in October, we approve our goals, and we move forward to two thousand twenty-two. But I also, you know, you have goals, we can set goals, but then we also get. This other stuff that's dumped in the last minute. I mean, we, you know, anti-racism was dumped in our lap six months ago. So I mean, we can plan goals, but that doesn't mean we're going to get to them. So that's what I'm suggesting is, is, you know. It's not that I don't want goals for this year, but I think we have enough on our plate that we need to finish up. And then going to two thousand twenty-two, we set a format where every fall, we set our goals for next year. And that's where I'm having issue.
Yeah, as I mentioned last week, you know, I felt the goals that were presented to the board were redundant. That we are currently, in some cases, we have got other committees that are working on these same projects. I do not think it was intent of this board to not address specific. Issues or goals you might want to comb that we already have on the table. I think Commissioner Robbins said it very well. That we've already got a lot on our plate, and when some of the commissioners brought forward the goals. We're already doing these things. And with all that said. It does not stop any one of us as a commissioner. Who may have a revelation or a great idea, and bring that to the board for consideration. And adopt that idea in May, June, July, whenever, for a discussion. I would suggest that as these things do come forward, that we spend a little bit more time on the discussion aspect of it. And maybe we have a workshop. Once or twice a year to look at the things that we want to accomplish as we move forward. Trends are changing, and they're changing rapidly. There's going to be a lot of changes in our communities, in our nation, going forward. And we really don't know what those changes look like yet. So for me, it may sound a bit loosey-goosey. But sometimes you have to take a step back and say, what do we have on our plate right now? What could we have on our plate in the future? And how do we stay nimble in addressing things of importance? I, I don't think any one of us disagrees that, you know, you've got to have a target in order to hit it. But just because we've done one thing the same way year after year, doesn't mean we have to continually do it the same way. Who knows? We may have very. Great ideas that come forward this year. We've got two brand-new commissioners. And I'm sure they're just as lost about the process and what we do here as I was for the first year I was a commissioner. And I'm sure every other commissioner can pretty much say the same thing. It takes a while to get that coming into the process and to the business of the county. And when we start imposing all these extra must-have dues, it's kind of silly. I think this board has worked together over years on a lot of issues. There's been some contention, and that's healthy. There's two sides to every story. There's two sides to every point. And we fuss and go back and forth on issues here at this board, but in the end, typically. We do what's right for the citizens of our community. So I will support this motion because I think. That we can move forward in a constructive way for all of us.
Commissioner Russell?
Yeah, there's a, there's a reason that we.
If I may?
Just so I missed it, she goes first. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I won't be supporting this. I will be supporting the motion to postpone. And the reason, I think goals are important because Commissioner Rushman just mentioned we need targets. We do need targets. And we need targets in order to measure our accomplishments and to guide us, keep us going on the right path. Because it's really easy to get overlaid with many other priorities and things, but you need to always be looking back at what are your goals? They should be fluid, in the sense they need to adjust in order to see that we accomplished really what we set out to do. And take into all new information that might come along the path. I think Commissioner Robbins' suggestion to set goals for two thousand twenty-two in the fall is an excellent one. And that is when they should be done, before the year starts and finalized in January of that year, but prepared and agreed to before that time. I think what Commissioner Russell is suggesting is right on target. We have a number of items that we started that are in process. There is nothing wrong with having those identified as our goals and with accomplishment areas underneath it. At least the ones I suggest submitted had those. And to move forward, it's just a guideline. It's, it's a measurement stick, if you will. To be sure that we are indeed moving forward on these goals and not, not forgetting them. And that we have some benchmarks we're trying to accomplish. So I am supporting the motion to postpone it, and I hope, I don't think we need to take a lot of time if we just simply adopt the goals. That we started with last year, those portions that are not complete, and move them forward. It's a simple thing, and it shouldn't take a long period of time. We could do it in a short time at the executive committee meeting in February, if not tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes, so last year's board, and we have a new board this year, but last year's board worked toward, together, broadband, anti-racism, housing. Septic ordinance discussion, but no action, substance abuse, and we were committed to net reduction in MERS. We've got a new board. We need to reaffirm, add to or take away from those priorities. And I'm, I'm having a trouble finding why it would be so difficult for us to agree to our priorities. That's what boards need to do, and we need to have that discussion, and I believe everybody sitting at this table is behind most of these items. There may be some differences of opinion on how we tackle the racism. There may be some on substance abuse, what we do. But all of us have campaigned for, talked about, supported, met in committees. To address housing, to address broadband, to address substance abuse, anti-racism. We need to reaffirm because we're a new board, and we're going to say we need to continue to work toward those. Or we're going to take one of them off our plate, or we're going to add something to the plate. But we must have that discussion, and I'm fine to do it in an executive committee and not in a special session. But I don't believe it's responsible work on our part to just say, we're going to just keep functioning and maybe we'll work on it, maybe we won't. This is a new board, and a new board needs to commit to a direction.
Commissioner Bunnack, I've had my hand up, up here, yonder. You know, in addition, I too support the motion to postpone. In addition to providing focus for us, it's also a statement to the community. I can imagine someone new to the community and trying to get to know the different functions of the county. And they come to the Board of Commissioners and go, well, what are their goals? What do they work on? Well, they don't have any goals. That's, you know, a, a statement of goals, I. I'm also confused because I keep hearing, well, we're going to work on these things, but you don't want to call them goals for some reason. That is a statement to our community. This is what we are working on for you. We know these things are important. We are going to focus on them and work hard on them. It is the way we communicate to the rest of the world who we are and what we stand for. And oh, by the way, are we achieving, making progress on the goals that will serve the people? So I also believe, and then I think the idea of starting on goals in September is an excellent idea, but I. I don't think we need to bypass this year because it would be very easy to do what Commissioner Russell has said. And that is a communication of our intent to our constituents.
Mr. Rushman?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to amend the amendment to add the word indefinitely. John Edwards, postpone indefinitely.
Support.
All right, so we would, we would first do on the amended, first amendment. Then we would do the second amendment, if that's changed the order. If it isn't changed, we'll do it as a second amendment. And then we'll do the final, whichever way it ends up.
I, I don't understand the motion that's on the floor right now.
She, she's asking that it be postponed indefinitely. You asked for it to be postponed. She's saying postponed indefinitely.
Can I ask a question?
Straight face.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, ask a question. Go ahead.
As a, as someone learning goals. So if, can, can we then, after the, if nothing passes, introduce another motion?
Yes, if everything fails, then yes, we can move on to another motion. We're still, we'd still be on goals.
Is, is it, is it a serious motion on the table now? I, I mean, that's a serious question. Are you really saying we're, 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 we're not, we're, we're going to have goals, but we're not going to talk it out, out of ever again? Because that, that's what indefinitely means.
Well, it would have to be brought forward to take it off of that, I suppose, you know. Commissioner Russell?
Typically, in a motion to postpone, the motion maker sets a time. You failed to do that.
No.
So I'm making the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Commissioner?
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Robbins brought up a very good point. I believe the amendment to the amendment is actually, yes, Commissioner Russell, a serious. Motion, because this would do just that. This would allow that to be brought up at a future date, perhaps September, October. Exactly as Commissioner Robbins mentioned. We already have a list of priority projects we've begun. That, as I said before, nobody has any intention, to my knowledge, of stopping any of the forward progress on. We have already a list of work to do. That list of work is everything we are mandated to do as commissioners. And it is our budget, it is our finances, it is our policies. We already have those things that we are mandated to do, already on our plate to do. On top of that, we have developed our CIP. In that CIP, that is basically a list of goals that we are developing. We have those, and things we are prioritizing those within that. I'll just remind us that we have dealt with a lot of big issues and big-ticket items that we had absolutely no idea we were going to have to deal with. As a board at the beginning of any year. Had no idea we had to deal with those things, but that is what we did as commissioners. So I'm going to support the amendment because I think that's a very fair thing to do. For this sitting board to do is, let's work on the, let's work on the things we've already begun. And just not pile on a lot, you know, any additional. Goals that maybe one or two commissioners ran on that may not be the priority of the rest of the board. It is just going to create division, and opposed to that division, I think we can move forward in a very. Positive manner by just working on the things we've already begun. If something comes up that lights a fire in somebody's heart, and they want to bring it to the table. Nothing, nothing stops that from happening. Every one of us have a right to bring any issue forward at any time. If I have a issue, I'll bring it forward. I'm not going to decide not to bring it forward because, oh gee, we didn't bring it up at full time. That's how this operates. That's how this court operated four years. It did just fine and actually accomplished a lot without, without. Creating the division of bringing extra things to the table and try to get others to. To sign on board to. So I'm going to support this amendment to postpone till a later date and give everybody a breather.
Commissioner Russell?
I, I won't keep talking, but there's a reason we waited until January. When we started talking about the anti-racism and we talked about the septic. This Board of Commissioners said we must wait until we get our new commissioners on board. It is unfair for last year's commission to commit this year's commission to goals. We now have two new commissioners. It's time to reaffirm what our goals and priorities are. That is the reason we didn't do it in September, specifically.
Commissioner Russell?
Having goals does not mean that you're excluding anyone from any, at any time of bringing up some new or some, something important or a different project. It just provides an overview. In the time that we have taken to discuss this yet again. We could have adopted those goals that we've been working on last year and carried them forward. That being said, I'm going to call the question, but I'm going to ask, Mr. Chairman, that you clearly identify what we're voting on. Because with an amendment to the amendment and then the original amendment. the original, I'm a little bit lost.
Let me just clarify something, just from a technical standpoint. Not even like your board who's in front of you. Commissioner Laucher made a motion that was seconded, so it's a legitimate motion. By your board rules, any commissioner can postpone to put off to different dates. That is a separate motion. And then Commissioner Rushden made amendment to that motion. Your board who says, "A motion to postpone supersedes a rigor motion," but it was not an amendment to your motion, it's a separate motion. Just want to clarify that. And then Commissioner Rushden, amendment, Commissioner Wessel's motion. So Commissioner Wessel did not make amendment, so technically there's only one amendment to Commissioner Wessel's motion. There is no amendment to Commissioner Laucher's motion. I just want to clarify that. And maybe helpful if the clerk read the motion made by Commissioner Wessel.
Commissioner Robbins had to stand up to speak. Would you want to call him first?
Yes, go ahead.
I don't want to keep being this, but I watch the clock. We've been like a half hour going back and forth on the goals. Like I said, I'm for goals. I came up here and rolled my sleeves and start solving some issues in this county. I sat there and went back and forth, what we're going to do. I mean, we made suggestions what we do for this year, and I might make another suggestion. You know, if we can make it short and sweet, where we don't have to go through four or five meetings, it's just all of us sit down and have Laura write up a form. They come up with three goals, I'm the lone tear, tie, or take two of us commissioners, we meet with Chet, and when we compare the goals, maybe a lot of them will match. We take the top two, we got our goals for 2021, and let's move on and start, you know. We hope to, people out here, I mean, I hear it every day on the streets, like, "Come on, what are you guys bickering back and forth?" We're tired of the parties here. Both parties are tired. You know, they want us to work together. We're a team here. There's seven people here that have a lot of talent, but we're not putting too good use for the people, and it's all time to start, so, you know, that's, that's my take. I mean, just, you know, let's come up with a solution and get moving on.
So does everyone understand what the first, the first amendment, amendment to the, the second motion is to postpone it indefinitely?
Correct.
And that's what we'll vote on?
You're only voting on the word indefinitely.
Adding indefinitely to that question.
Correct.
Yes. So does everyone understand that we're adding indefinitely to the motion?
So this is a vote just on adding the word indefinitely?
Yes, to Commissioner Wessel's motion to postpone it, postpone it indefinitely.
So we're not, so what about his original motion? Are we also going to vote on that?
First, we vote on this one, then if that passes, then it changes that, and then we'll vote on that. If it doesn't pass, then we vote on his original motion.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little called a question. Is that correct?
That's right.
And when a commissioner calls a question, that requires a vote?
Two commissioners have to call.
It has to be, it has to be seconded.
Was it not seconded?
Two commissioners, just a point. When a question is called, that means they wish to vote. A second commissioner has to call a question. Once they call the question, they cannot speak any further. The minute the second commissioner calls a question, you have to vote to move.
Is it the second commissioner who has to call a question, or supports the call of the question?
Call the question, which is supporting that same thing.
Okay, so it's a motion and a support.
But that is not debatable.
Right, and that request did not receive a second?
Okay.
I'll second it. I will second it.
All right, we're going to vote on the, the word indefinitely at this time. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion fails, four to three.
Okay, all right, the open means that if it's split, you should do a roll call vote against remote people.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call on this.
Sorry, keep, keep my case.
All right, so this, just so we're clear, this was the amendment by Commissioner Rushden, so we're voting on the word indefinitely. Okay, so we start with Commissioner Rushden.
Yes.
Commissioner Sotis Little? No. Commissioner Wessel?
No.
Commissioner Alguier?
No.
Chairman Bunnack?
Yes.
I did a check.
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
No.
Okay, so that fails, three to four.
Okay, with that, then we will vote on the, the, the motion to postpone this.
I still verify that was to postpone until we could have a meeting, either a special meeting or executive committee.
Okay. So again, we'll just do a roll call.
Okay, so that, that to postpone until a special meeting or, I've got it written up here. Okay, so this was by Commissioner Wessel. So Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Chairman Bunnack?
No.
Commissioner Lotner?
No.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushden?
No, and I'm going to tell you why I voted no. Because, because of the appointed time. One meeting was either for a special meeting, and the other meeting was for an executive meeting. I would prefer to have this discussion either at executive or a workshop, so that we're in a committee-type meeting, as opposed to a meeting, a special meeting.
Commissioner Sotis Little?
Yes.
Four to three, passes.
Okay. So we have that. Then we'll move on to information technology. And in this one, we have potential dual veracuda essentials. Page three. Commissioner Lotner?
I would move that the Board of Commissioners waive its policy on bid requirements and approve the quote from Reiman for renewal of the veracuda essentials maintenance agreement funds to come from data processing number 636.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. So that brings us to an update on the dual authentication. Commissioner Wessel.
I move that we approve $3,600 to redo the subscription to dual for dual office provision software funds to come from fund 636.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes six to one, so we'll have to have a roll call.
Oh, it's one, sorry, keep over. I think my hand just went up late.
Oh, all right, all right, so it's seven to zero.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so you voted for it, then, Commissioner Alguier? Yes, all right, it's seven to zero.
Yes.
All right. All right, so then that would bring us to building safety. Commissioner Wessel.
I move to allow the Building Safety Department to fill the bidding secretary position.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Rushden.
Move to approve the after-effect building permit fee policy as presented.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. So that brings us to Board of Appeals. The deadline. Commissioner Rushden.
Move to approve the renewal of Construction Board of Appeals procedural rules as amended.
Order.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Bring to Leland Dam Authority, the DMC.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waive the board policy on bid requirements and accept the quote from Fisher Contracting to perform the fabrication and installation of the gate lockout assembly for the Leland Dam at a cost not to exceed $40,900, fund to come from fund number 805.
Support.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven to zero. So we also have a transfer of funds. Commissioner Lotner?
Would you like to do those now, or would you like to wait?
No, that's, that's Commissioner Lotner, that's just that action item 7B that was right underneath on that sheet about where that extra $10,000 was going to come from.
Okay. Well, I moved that the Leland County Board of Commissioners, yep?
Yeah.
It said a board of men.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners amended Leland Dam Fund 805-000.000-970.000 by $10,000 to cover the balance of the dam gate assembly, and that said transfer be from the general fund.
Order.
Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. So that brings us to the defined benefit plan.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners forward the MERS Defined Benefit Plan Adoption Agreement Addendums to the regular session on Tuesday, Jan, whoops, seconded by Wessel. That's, is that the wrong one to read?
Yes.
I'm glad I reached this, Chair.
I believe we have the motion right below it.
So that's the new one?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve, as presented, the Defined Benefit Plan Adoption Agreement Addendum for Municipality 450101, Divisions 45010101, General 45010102, POAM, 45010111, Non-Union 45010120, COAM, 45010112, All Employees.
Second.
Commissioner Rushden.
Question from the clerk. In presenting this, or filling out this form, does this change anything, or are we actually remaining status quo on how?
It's, it's remaining status quo to how we're implementing it based on personnel policies and current union contracts. You always have the ability, should you decide, to change these at any time.
So in other words, if in fact we would be paying MERS on the car loans, we could rescind that?
You could, and it's only then, I specifically asked that question, because when we confer with Chet today, I said that was the example I had specifically used. Five years ago, we couldn't change anything. That's one of the things that Tony was a little not sure with, their documentation that we could, but there are other.
Do you want to clarify which Tony you're talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tony, the general chairman of MERS representative, he answered all of our questions for us. But there are many things that we can change in there if we want to. So just because you're approving this today, it's just approving the way it is, because union contracts can change things, financial can change things. It's simply putting in place what we are doing today, and I did not want to check wrong boxes that would tip the scales the wrong way for anyone.
I appreciate your explaining that to us.
And I can just clarify that every unit of government that is in MERS is going through the same process, asking for clarification. So just our employees don't have any concerns with the public. We're not making a major modification. We're just clarifying the terms of our MERS. I believe of six, six different groups? Five groups, yeah.
I believe this was a requirement that was sent to us.
Yes, from MERS.
That's not something that we initiated.
And they're just, they're just rolling it out and trying to get everyone in so that they don't have difficulty when trying to figure final average compensations, knowing what to exclude, include in wages.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to compliment both Michelle and Jen, because this was a lot of work. It seemed like a small agenda items for all of you, but a lot of behind-the-scenes work went in, and I don't know how many hours of discussion they had, just to make sure we were doing it properly, so thank you for both of your efforts on the public key. I acknowledge the work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
We do have a second, okay?
I guess, Sotis Little.
Okay.
Second, you're there.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to administration and the temporary emergency leave. Commissioner Wessel.
I move the Board of Commissioners approve the Leland County Temporary Leave Policy effective June, January 4 through March 31, 2021.
Court.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. That brings us to the MMRMK renewal. Commissioner Rushden.
I would move to waive the policy on bid requirements and approve the 2021 renewal of property and casualty insurance between Leland County and Municipal Risk Management Authority in an amount not to exceed $226,299, with those funds to come from 101-930-969-95400.
Court.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven to zero. Then that brings us to the septic records update.
Yeah, let me give you an update of that. As a part of the last meeting, I thought Rob Herman, the great first step there, and I think all of you were impressed with the work he did. So the second step is Rob and I had a discussion with Eric Johnson, which will be the next logical step, and I think all of you talked about pilot program. We don't overwhelm Rob with the whole county, but we talked about where we could start and what he could do, and what would be helpful also for the Health Department. So we asked Eric, you know, "What would you like to see in this pilot?" And we actually came up with a suggestion that Rob said he can do, assuming you all agree with it. We'd like to start with a pilot on Little Traverse Lake, and what Eric should be helpful, and Rob said he can do this, he could identify a map and put on, where you click on a piece of property, and it'll tell you what decade that system was installed in. So there'd be different colors from the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, thousands going forward. So that would be the next step, and Rob thought that would not be too overwhelming, but his other duties responsibly, and that'd be the next step. And Eric said that'd be a great pilot for him. He'd love to have that for the whole county. We said, "Let's start with a pilot and see if the data is there and can translate the way it does," because we're talking about two different software programs, it's all within the records. But both Rob and Eric thought that'd be the ideal step, so we're recommending, I guess we're going to go forward in this interview, Jack, we don't need a motion, and this, there's no cost involved, but it would be doing a pilot program on Little Traverse Lake, and then Rob would be able to identify each septic system by the year it was installed.
Commissioner Alguier.
Thank you so much. I have a motion. Rob Herman's use of ArcGIS will be very, very critical to this process. There are other technologies that we can also bring to bear to even expand the knowledge that we get from this pilot. I appreciate you all coming up with that idea and supporting it. I move that we establish a date for a special session to meet with Leland Clean Water and the Benzy Leland Board of Health to develop a detailed plan for a pilot consisting of septic installations surrounding Little Traverse Lake, including objectives, scope, timeline, budget, and a post. budget, and a post-pilot Board of Commissioners study session to consider next steps.
Support.
Did you want to speak to that, Michelle or?
Um, like I said, there are very significant technologies that we can bring to the pilot. I think it's important that we have Eric in the room, someone from Leland Cleanwater, and have a, a, a session where we can discuss exactly what we want to do and what we want to come out of this. And if we could either establish a study session date for the next month. Now, we're going to have to work with Eric's schedule. He's a real busy, busy guy.
Mr. Laugner.
I just have a question of a point of order, Mr. Chairman. We head on the agenda, something totally different than what the motion is set up there for. We have septic record, um, septic records update. That is what was discussed last week. So I'd like an understanding on, that sounds to me like this would have, this is something that totally changes what we discussed. Just should that have been added as a late agenda item?
Um, I, I think because we have septic records on here, and she's talking about septic records, and she wants to, you know, she wants.
I'd like to see the motion in writing in front of me before we vote on this, Mr. Chairman.
I said it to set this. Chat, you have a copy of it.
Commissioner Laugner has the floor at this time.
I'm sorry.
But it did do the, the, yeah. I, I mean, I, I, if you, I was reading Commissioner, Board Commissioners' rules according from given to us from the state. And we do have to consider that, I believe Cleveland Township now has a septic ordinance. Yeah, and so the county cannot interfere with their septic ordinance according to the rules set up for the Board of Commissioners by the state. So, so we cannot, according to what it says in 4611-J. So I think you should read that, and if a township has an ordinance, the county cannot hold a riot. So I know that we can't go to Glen Arbor, Glen Arbor Township, Empire Township, and Cleveland Township. So if we do this pilot program in Cleveland Township, we can't change anything there unless the township allows us to make an ordinance, you know, but I, it would have to be up to the township to the law. It didn't have to be sent there, I think. So I think we're starting in the wrong place if we go into Cleveland Township.
I don't see that we're trying to change Cleveland Township's ordinance. We are gathering information about how, what, what the contamination levels are between septics and water systems. So we're not talking about changing there. This is a, this is a, this is an opportunity for us to examine and learn from so that we know where to go next.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can't interfere with their ordinance, so we don't want to start there. So if we start there and get all the information, we're, we're, then we have to go somewhere else if we want to do an ordinance. So if you want to, if we're, if we're, if we're going towards an ordinance, then we have to, we have to do something outside those three townships.
I don't.
Because they already have an ordinance, and the county, the Board of Commissioners cannot interfere with the township's ordinance. That's the way the rule reads, and we can get a, a, you know, opinion from our lawyer. We may have one.
I think we did a topic where basically the county, not Leland County, any county cannot pass an ordinance on septic systems. It has to come from the health department. I don't know if the health department, if they did it as a health department, how that would overrule being, whatever, or you said, syndrome?
Well, yeah.
That I don't know.
Township ordinance, because if we passed it from here, it would be a county ordinance.
Yeah. We, we do not have the legal authority to pass some ordinance. That we did get a legal opinion.
Then we, we really shouldn't be talking about septic ordinance because it has to come from the health department anyway.
The way the process works, the health department would have to pass some ordinance. That would have to be approved by both Benzy and Leland County. But Commissioner Laugner's right that we, as a board, you cannot pass an ordinance man being. It has to come from the health department.
It's her.
I just have a question. I'm not in a position, if you're going to vote on this motion, I'm not in a position to be able to repeat it like Commissioner Laugner had asked. So perhaps if we're going to move forward to vote and it has to be read back, we could take a brief recess to print this off. If you've got it in an email form because it's kind of.
I didn't have it here.
Well, she, she's right. So we should take five minutes here and see if we can.
It's not, it's okay.
Are you in recess for a second?
Yes, we're on a five minute recess.
...
And I think the point that Commissioner Alguer is making is that they would want the data. And I would think that Cleveland Township would want this data, too. I don't see this as in any way impacting in a negative sense any ordinance that Cleveland Township has. It's an asset. It's going to provide them with data if they choose to make any changes or if they want to see how some of the problems can be addressed. But it's research, it's data gathering.
Yes, I think you're right. I don't see where it's going to affect the ordinance the way I read it. What I do realize is that when I read the motion from last week, it says the Leland... Where is it here? Leland Board of Commissioners moved the conversion of septic records. We're only talking about conversion of septic records. And that's what Commissioner, the Administrator talked about that we can do. And he gave us an update on it. So it has, this is, what you're trying to establish here is something totally different than what we have passed forward. So I do believe that the motion is out of line and is not relevant to what the motion that moved it forward. So we're only really supposed to be talking about the records and how they're going to be converted, the septic records. And that's what we're doing first, but this goes way beyond that scope. So I would have to say that the motion is invalid and that we, you know, it's whether we want to have him do this around Bill Trevor's Lake or not with the records that we do in the digital. And we can do that through consensus. Commissioner Alguer.
So then, when that is done, then we need to make another motion to use that data to actually give our citizens information about whether their drinking water is... I know people want to know, is my drinking water being contaminated? People want to know that. So are you saying that's a motion when this is done to enhance the data and use it?
When we have our executive committee meeting, if we want to bring that forward to our regular meeting, then that's what we have to be talking about, not data. And we're here, we're only talking about data. And if we're going to have that moved forward using our GSI system. This is totally different when I read this motion. And it involves, it's very, very complicated and much more involved. So previously, when we did that, we've actually moved it forward from the executive. So if you wanted to do this, we would have had to do this as a late addition. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's beyond the scope of what we passed to move forward. Commissioner West.
And I won't disagree with you strongly, although I think the only reason to collect the data is to help add to the records that we have. And we're not talking about just records, when was the septic system built or when was it checked? But what other data around those septic systems can we collect? So I think this could fit, but I'm willing, I don't know, I'm willing to wait until executive committee has sorted out.
We can... I'd be glad to add it to...
President has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got two issues on the table, it appears. One being the septic records and the other about the need to know water quality in a certain way. And I would like to refer the commissioners back to each two of our direct minutes where we just passed a motion and approved work order number three for water quality monitoring. And if those people that way are interested in water quality, I would suggest that they work with the proper agency to get that information.
Any other comments?
So my consensus, you will move forward on?
Yeah, I'm going to go forward with it. And I'll have an update. Hopefully, Rob will have that done by the February 8th.
Is there a way that we can add to that, any other data that we have about when those systems might have been inspected?
I don't think it, this, I'm not an expert with their data at the Health Department. And I don't want to impose something on Rob because he has a full-time job already that he's working on. What he and Eric agree is this would be the next logical step. So I don't want to supersede anything, but they're, those two people are the experts. And I want to supersede what they said would be the next logical step. That makes sense.
Mr. Al.
Yes, no, absolutely, I agree absolutely. Ms. Chat has the understanding about what this will do. This is a first step. And we won't know what we know until we learn what he's going to be bringing to us. Then we will know what we need to expand on, we will then know what our next steps are. So we just need to just find this out first.
Please go ahead.
Is it correct that this lake is in Cleveland Township that we're talking about? Okay. And is it also a correct statement that Cleveland Township has a certain septic ordinance in place today? Is that a correct statement?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So I think it would be advantageous for this board to know the process that Cleveland Township goes through to enforce their ordinance. If they currently have a program in place that monitors septic systems, then what we're doing then becomes redundant. And we're asking one of our employees to do the work that should be done through Cleveland Township under their own ordinance. So I think we should think about that. And as Commissioner Bunnic pointed out, where's the line? Where do we draw the line between overstepping our authority as a county with a township having an ordinance in place?
Commissioner West.
And I understand Cleveland has a septic ordinance. And part of the reason I was interested in adding the data, if they have an ordinance, we ought to be able to know that they've done some inspections. And we ought to know if they've seen some violations.
I would think that... I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. What I've heard from the townships that I've talked to is the only, the ordinance is just there if there's a complaint. But there's no regular inspection because they aren't staffed for. But when we have a study session to talk about this, let's invite the supervisor or the township officials to join us and see what interest they might have.
Mr. Al.
I think that there's some very valid points brought up. And very interestingly, I think Commissioner Rushton is absolutely right. This will benefit Cleveland Township. But it also will give us an idea of where we are. It's going to be a snapshot, it's going to be a sample. And potentially expose any homes that do not have a system in place or anything before '72, in which case it sounds like their ordinance, they could move forward on with their ordinance because they're going to have data. So that in itself will just add more to our pilot, I believe. So I do want to see, I think we'll just learn so much, but so much more is premature. But we're going to learn the time it's going to take him to do this kind of work and an idea of what we're going to find. So I'm just anxious to get going on it.
Commissioner Alguer.
And we need to remember that this is the first step. That I believe as a county, we can provide support for skills and technologies that are out there. There's a lot to be discovered. The very first step is what Rob Herman will do, and we really appreciate it. We have an opportunity for our citizen to understand at a deeper level than we ever have what the connectivity between wells and septics is. That's an invaluable piece of information for our constituents. So I support our completing this very first step. And we need, as commissioners, to follow up and help connect the dots so all of the technologies that are available to us can benefit our citizens.
Commissioner Ross.
I find it amazing that this board has no problem superseding its authority, septic ordinance that's been granted to the townships. I don't disagree with Commissioner Alguer's comments. You know, citizens do have a right to know. But I think the venue was incorrect. It should be local, not county. And with that said, if we are insisting on moving forward with this, I would request the Administrator to provide the commissioners all septic ordinances in the county for each township that has one. I want to look at the language.
We can do that easily.
You know, maybe individual commissioners might be able to assist at their township level in providing a better ordinance for their own communities. I get the feeling in my communities, they're not interested in an ordinance. Otherwise, they would have passed one.
Well, I mean, I know I talked to Bingham Township, and they said they didn't want one. You know, they said if the county wanted to do it, then they would go by that. But they, you know, that was when I, you know, it's one of the things that I watched. Bay Village has their own septic system. But also, I believe, and I've been told this several different times, that we're doing this backwards. The ordinance, if we want an ordinance, I'm all for us getting the data and giving it to the Health Department. But if we want an ordinance, it has to come from the Health Department. They're the only ones who can write up an ordinance. And all we do is okay it because we're, and then Benzie County has to okay it too. But it has to be written and put together by the Health Department, not by us. So our thing is to give them information, to give the data, to try to use the GIS system to help it. But we keep talking about in ordinance, but we don't have any in front of us and we can't write one. It has to come from the Health Department. So this is why it's been going on for 20 years here, because nothing has come from the Health Department. They even want to do one. The only one they want to do is one just like Benzie's. And that's what they keep saying. Even when Tony brought up his, they said they don't want that. They want one just like Benzie's. At least that's what I heard when Eric thought, he didn't want to do this, didn't want to do the pilot, didn't want to do a septic ordinance different than Benzie's. Commissioner Al.
I'm confused why we keep ending up on ordinance when we're talking about a study.
Commissioner West.
I don't disagree, Mr. Chair, with what you said about the Health Department needing to develop the ordinance. My understanding is they wanted to do it the same way that they developed the ordinance for Benzie. They want to know before they go to all that work that there's interest on our part. And we need to tell them we're interested. The other thing I'd say is whether Bingham wants one or not, groundwater does not recognize township barriers, boundaries. So groundwater doesn't stop at the township limits. So it's important, the ideal, I think, would be a statewide ordinance like all the other states have. But I think a first step of getting the data would be good, but I just want to get as much data as we can. I think, and what that data we saw the other day, there were properties that there was no highlight on. So how do we find out what's there? Is there a barrow in the ground? Because when we met with the Health Department the first round, they said we have homes that have undocumented systems. And so whatever records we put together, we need to know where those homes are. I think it's legitimate, we need to know what the townships want. And I think that's easy to find out what townships want. I know what my townships want. They're looking for some direction and some help. So let's get township people in the room and say, look, you want to work together in. But let's collect the data first.
Any other comments? Commissioner Al.
Just a brief one. I would encourage you to ask a different question to the people in Bingham Township. Not, do you want an ordinance? But do you care if your drinking water is clean? It's a different question. That's what this is really about.
All right, so then that brings us to the Northwest Regional Airport Authority. You skipped a topic. Oh, Benzie, funding assistance.
Yeah, let me just give an update. I think last week, several commissioners asked me to reach out to the Health Department to see if they had funding to help with the distribution of the vaccines. So I talked to Ms. Peacock and to the business finance manager, Ms. Huckney. And the issue is not lack of personnel, it's the lack of the vaccines. So they were very grateful. And I asked her some specific, a couple of these asked how many we're getting new in coming. So I reached out to Mrs. Peacock, so I'm sure I had the facts. So let me just kind of go through this here. As of last Friday, the Health Department received a total of 1,570 vaccination doses. All of them have been administered. So every vaccine that they get, they allocate it. Ms. Peacock is requesting 1,000 doses per week. However, the challenge is the entire state of Michigan gets 60,000 total. So we're not going to get $1,000 or 1,000 vaccines per week. She's keep requesting that. She doesn't know how many she gets. The issue is not lack of staffing, it's really the lack of the vaccine that's available. If Michigan can get 60,000, there's 83 counties, although they have a lot more population than we do. So the last two weeks, they have received, this is for Benzie and Leland County, 1,570. Every vaccine they get is allocated to individuals. None of them are sitting anywhere. They have staffing. What they are working on, and I asked us to put this on the next month's agenda, they are working on a plan for a distribution center in Leland County. And there will be some costs associated with that. They said, would they really like, if you're willing to help them, once we have more details, help with some of the cost for that distribution center? So it's not the personnel, it's the actual cost of potentially renting a facility, the heat utilities. I don't want to say what the facility is going to be publicly, but the one they're looking at, that means that to turn on the heat and utilities, there'd be some costs, there'd be no profit from that thing. But there'd be some costs associated. They said they would appreciate getting assistance with that. But we'll have a firm plan in place by next, by the February 9th meeting. So I'll give you more updates. So they said, thank you very much, but right now, they're not needing any additional help at this point.
Mr. Al.
So 1570, that's for us and Benzie?
Yes.
Okay, that's combined.
That's combined.
Can you talk into the microphone? So they have 1570s combined between two counties.
Yes. And those have been allocated to first responders, people in the medical profession and so forth. They're hoping to get the people over a certain age, as soon as they finish all the first responders, the fire departments, the people who are in the medical profession initially.
Do you know if they're reserving any of the vaccines for the booster?
I don't know that. I'm not an expert, Bill. She did tell me every vaccine they get, they have allocated, they have nothing reserved. So I'm guessing there'll be others coming, but...
And I would assume that the state would allocate those boosters in addition to new vaccines as they roll out. I would assume that.
Yeah, I would assume that too.
Otherwise, the first vaccine is only 55%.
So basically, we agreed, they hope to have a more detailed plan in two weeks. So I told them I'd put this on the February agenda. They said, thank you for reaching out to them, they appreciate it. And we'll have probably a more specific option for you in February. At that time, if you wish, you could help them with some of the costs associated with the distribution. But from a personnel standpoint, they are in good shape. They may get some help from some reserve officers and National Guard, too. But obviously, with the lack of vaccines right now, they have a staff to cover it. So I'll just put this on the February 9th agenda.
Commissioner West. I have been very impressed with the Health Department's daily press releases. And I think they're doing an outstanding job under these conditions. Is the senior services arranging transportation for seniors who need to get the vaccination that may not have transportation?
I don't honestly know that. I can find out, I just don't know that. I know we don't provide much transportation. They do work with BETA. They have some group of volunteers that help with transportation, but it's not a lot. So I honestly don't know that, but I can find out.
And I understand, sorry, I'm sorry, I understand that Munson has things now available for anybody 85 and over. That all you have to do is call the Munson.
I can confirm, talking to several seniors, I have called Munson, got through and got appointments. So there could be, so this is additional to the vaccine that the Health Department. So there could be more people that are accommodating vaccinated through Munson.
Any other questions, Chair? All right, so then, I'm sorry, we'll move on to Northwest Regional Airport.
Yeah, we briefly talked about it last week, and you asked to put it on the agenda. So I talked to Mr. Klein, and I left a message for Mr. Alter. So as you know, the deadline is March 1st to appoint people to the authority. The Articles of Corporation having submitted this to the State of Michigan, filed with the Secretary of State Office. It's a nine-person board. We have three vacancies. The Grant Terrors County has five. And one will be outside of both counties, and that will be appointed by Grant Terrors County. It is recommended that we appoint people to the authority. We could do it this weekend, you could do it next month. And they staggered one-year term, two-year term, and three-year terms. Actually, as commissioners, you appoint people every year, but there's no mandate that they have to be commissioners. So that's why they're three-year terms. It's up to you how you determine that.
Commissioner Al.
So if I may, I would, do we have to do, must we do it by resolution?
Well, that's from the legal counsel requesting the resolution that you were emailed, I believe it was Friday.
We have one citizen sitting...
Right now, Mr. Plamond is on the Airport Commission. And then Commissioner Rushton is the other one on the commission. But we, they recommend that they reappoint, assuming Commissioner Rushton, which is the serve, she should be reappointed to the authority. And Mr. Plamond, and I called Mr. Plamond today just to verify he's interested. He's very interested. We need to, or you need to reappoint them to the authority.
Okay. So my question, by doing it by resolution, I'm prepared to make a motion to reappoint those two. So Mr. Plamond, being the one-year term ending December 31, 2021, and Commissioner Rushton being December 31, 2022. And waiting on the 3rd until we can have timely discussion on who we want to put on as a third. Because I think that we need to advertise that position, find out who's interested in it. We also have to decide, did we want to do, try for an elected official, even though we know we may not get an elected official?
Well, I mean, I had written, looked at it, written it down. And I have Steve Plamond as three, have Commissioner Rushton as two, and myself as one. That's what I had put down.
There was a motion of non-second.
Okay, well, then, I'm in the middle of trying to make that motion. So I understand your recommendation. And that would be my motion then, in that order. I'll support.
But just for clarification, Mr. Plamond for three years, Commissioner Rushton for two, Commissioner... The legal counsel did suggest that you appoint the non-commissioner to the three-year term. Because really, commissioners, you really are on one-year terms, because every year, you appoint people.
That's my motion.
Commissioner.
Did you want to speak to him? Yes, if this is for, I would.
She supported.
Okay, thank you. Only briefly, this is, this year is going to be a really critical year in that authority as they get going, as they find out how it's going to go, and they set all kinds of their schedules, et cetera. So I think that suggestion is a good one. I appreciate the input from our attorney. And that would, this would be a very good solution to getting that first year of our authority under the belt.
Just a clarification, that came from the airport attorney.
Oh, airport, well, either, I appreciate that, sure.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really think that's kind of a smart move for this board. There's a lot of unanswered questions. And because Will served on the, with the study group, he was with us for a year and has a, I would say, a pretty good idea of what the process has looked like and some of the issues on the board. So I appreciate the ability to stay on through the transition. And I certainly support Steve Plamond, and he has a background in aviation. And I think he's been an asset to the board, so.
Commissioner Al.
Yeah, I'm pleased that Deb Rushton is willing... Yeah, I'm pleased that Deb Rushton is willing to serve another term. That makes sense to me. I'm pleased that Steve is going to be there again. I, I'm disappointed that when we have commissioner appointments, that we don't get an opportunity to have discussion before the chair appoints a commissioner to the position. I communicated with Mr. Bonnick twice this week, saying that I had interest in this. At least if another commissioner has interest in serving on a commission or committee, there ought to be discussion about it, I think. I am disappointed that didn't have the opportunity to do that. I will support Mr. Bonnick on this, because I think whoever we send needs to have unanimous support. But I'm disappointed by the process and disappointed with the chair decision didn't look forward the way he did.
Commissioner Alway.
I am too. If other people are asking to be on a board, Commissioner Bonnick, would that not lead to a discussion instead of you just arbitrarily giving it to yourself? I guess I need to understand this process.
Well, the process is the chairman usually appoints committees, okay? And then, so, and then the board either approves it or changes it. It just as we did at our organizational meeting. I had a list and we did change it. We went through some things and we changed them. But that's, the normal procedure is you make the list, you make an appointment, and then the board can either approve it or disapprove it or change it. So that's, that's the process that we normally have. I mean, and I understand it. I, you know, I did, I did email back Commissioner Wessel and told him about, you know, what was going on, because he had an interest. There's also 10 other people, I was told, that have applied to be on there. Commissioner Rushton.
I must have missed something here, because I thought this initiated with Commissioner Lotner's motion. And upon hearing the chair's suggestion, she changed her motion, and it was supported. So I, I didn't see where the chair appointed this. I thought this came about by a motion. Verify that if I'm wrong.
Mr. Lawrence.
No, you are correct. I would always say it helped me complete my motion. And, and the reason I'm going along with this, because as I said, this is a great step for this next year. I also expressed interest in the past in serving on the Airport Commission, and I've never had the opportunity or the privilege to serve on that board. But what I do recognize is all of the effort put in by our chair in all of those planning and meeting sessions on whether or not we were even going to form the authority. So Chairman Bonnick is much more knowledgeable than me, certainly at this point, I know that. And this is basically going to be for 11 months. We're already, you know, here at the end of January as far as we go here as a board. So for this next 11 months, as this authority gets on their feet, I think it's a great solution.
Commissioner Sussel.
Well, my original raising of the hand a while back was to ask the question, Mr. Chairman, were you interested in anyone else having an interest in being on the board? But, but then the motion proceeded after you had indicated that you had nominated yourself. And then Commissioner Lotner included it in her, her motion. So you have done an excellent job on this. I do, I hope that next year it is open to other commissioners to take that position, and it doesn't become a longstanding situation where the two commissioners that are appointed on it now continue on forever or for an extended period of time, not forever, but for an extended period of time. Because clearly, there is interest in the board with Ms. Lotner and also Mr. Wessel, who would like to have that opportunity. But I will support the motion, because you did do an excellent job, and I think can carry it forward where we need to go this first year.
Any other questions or statements? They all was in favor?
It's a resolution.
What's that?
It's a resolution.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
I want to clarify that the motion that Commissioner Lotner was to adopt the Northwest Regional Airport Authority appointments resolution with the names inserted, as you stated.
Correct.
Okay, so on the resolution, Commissioner Lotner.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushton.
Yes.
Commissioner Sussel. Yes, she's nodding her head, yes. Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Commissioner Alwire.
Yes.
Chairman Bonnick.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you very much. So that brings us to review of financials. Committee reports, recommendations, resolutions. And then special reports by staff of commissioners. Now, bring this to public comment, which is 231-256-8109. Okay, go ahead, sir.
This is John Polk. Good evening, commissioners. Real quick comment on the septic records. Maybe this is for Chet also. About two years ago, we got into a big study when we were looking into the septic mountains. They all offered at the time, Chuck Grant and another technician. Really went through these records, and especially for Lake Loma. They were looking at homes that were built after the regulations. They were looking at homes that had holding tanks. And they were looking at the ones, these old systems, like you said, have barrels in the ground. And matter of fact, a few days ago, I looked at those results. Chuck Grant may be able to just walk off and put his hand on that file if someone has to. So there is some data out there. Now, whether you put it on lands or GIs and all that is something else. But there's a nice big file study of all the home record school in Chaffin or where that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Problem? Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, I'm calling to the county, I'm calling in with a letter of rejection. I'm calling in regarding to the comments about the Health Department and the ordinance. The Betsy and Leland County Health Department would like to have an ordinance for Betsy and Leland County both. They don't necessarily want to have the same ordinance that Betsy currently has. And they are, and they're to do this, to write an ordinance that would be presented to both counties for approval. Any information that could be collected or data that could be helpful to them in making an ordinance would be very welcome. So as Mr. Polk just stated, there is some information already from Lake Loma. And if we could get more information from Little Traverse Lake, it would be very beneficial to the health board, I think, moving forward and forming a new ordinance for both counties.
Does this speaker identify themselves?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. I call for public comment.
Hello, commissioners. This is Melissa Katsaskey. I am calling to support a reading of land acknowledgement, either on the agenda or posted to the Leland County website or posted to county chief or to vice president, county superintendent. I would also like to add the racial authority added to the goals of 2021. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, please call 231-256-8109. I call for public comment. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I didn't see any splits and I didn't see any clashes. It's a great show.
Excuse me, could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Victor Goldschmidt, the Anatomist. Yeah, I repeat, I didn't see any clashes. Yes, I didn't see.
Okay, so Vic, could you turn down the TV, please? Because there's a feedback, there's a delay here. So then, feedback.
Sorry, Victor Goldschmidt, the Anatomist. Okay, yeah. I repeat, I didn't see any clashes. Yes, I didn't see it. So Vic, could you turn down the TV, please? There's a feedback. Yes, again, have I come to you now?
Yeah, but we're still having feedback from the delay. Okay, now, go ahead.
I'm on my way. Should I talk now?
Yeah, if you turn your computer down, that would be helpful, but, yes.
I'm not even, I'm 20 feet away in two different rooms.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I must have simply tried to share that I appreciate that there were no clashes nor splits. But I still encourage you to try to go into a system of planning intentionally. And it's proven that an embraced unifying vision can certainly help and enable the better agreement on goals, the process of goal setting. And by a separate comment, I'm going to write a letter to the enterprise requesting that they consider not identifying these commissioners as to party affiliation, which will imply the party appointed to them, but instead referring to district affiliation. And if you all agree with that, I encourage you to do it. And another one, another thing is, I don't know whether you're doing it or not doing it, but sometimes it helps an organization like our Board of Commissioners to have somebody in charge to be the communication agent for press releases and so forth. Because if we were providing press releases that were attractive and nice, it might not lead to the exaggerations of things in which we're tripping. And that's all I would say. And I can thank you very much for all you're doing. And I appreciate all your sensitivity to your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Thank you. If there are any other public comments, please call 231-256-8109. Any other commissioner comments?
Actually, I want to back up, because I do have a claims account question. It would be on page four.
Of lakes, lakes?
We haven't gotten to that, I think. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it's review of financials. You're right.
How, no, I'm sorry. Can you read it right? CDW Government, Inc., in the amount of $8,372 capital outlay. Polycom real presence and Polycom one-year partner premier. I would like to know what that is.
That's for the second polycom system that we, I see that's what it is. That will be reimbursed in the full amount.
Right, but is there some sort of a subscription to this?
I believe it's for, we pay an annual fee to use. Sir, is that correct?
That was something the CDWG rep told us, Polycom said we had to add to this initial billing. So we've added to the subscription that we're paying for, is that what you said? Because I can't hear you from here. I don't think we currently have a subscription with this one. But we now have added cost. That was something they added. They told the guy we could not work the new one for downstairs unless we agreed to that.
The first Polycom did not come from CDW. The first Polycom did not come from that vendor. So when you went and looked for a second vendor through COVID, through the grant, we went to our, in essence, most reliable vendor, and it was CD. Was it GW? Yeah.
CDW.
Yep. Ron purchased this with Chet's.
I wonder if the board had any discussion on that. Did we?
Yes, the board approved a motion not to spend up to X dollars to purchase.
Okay.
Polycom.
So I'm assuming, I'm asking the question, is this subscription cost going to repeat itself annually?
That would be my guess, but that'd be something that we can have Ron talk to them and ask about when he ordered it through them.
And those $8,372?
Is not the total package.
That, the subscription, the Polycom, 7,37167. The Poly one-year partner premier RP was 1,093.
Okay, so it's $1,100 for the subscription.
So what will happen is that that's going to be a continuing, continuous, continuous cost. You're going to see that when Ron does his budget packet for this coming summer.
We should check to see if that's after or not. I'm not sure, it may be a one-time fee.
I think it might have been a one-time fee, so we should really get confirmation.
We can confirm that.
I would appreciate that, because, you know, when we start making these decisions, I mean, I'm not saying the Polycom downstairs wasn't a bad idea. But the problem that I have is when we start moving things into place like this, I think we should be made aware that there is a continuing addition to the budget going forward. So I appreciate that in the future.
Great.
Any other, another review of financials? All right, so then, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Sussel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to comment that in our goal discussion tonight, it was mentioned that if new commissioners had an idea, they would be welcome to bring it forward to share with their board colleagues. And Commissioner Alwire did just that tonight with something that she felt would benefit Leland County residents. And she was informed that it should have been added as a late agenda item, and that concern was expressed that perhaps it was a local issue, not a board issue, that she was suggesting. And I just encourage Commissioner Lotner and Commissioner Robbins to, to receive these comments as helpful, not dismissive, and to bring her idea back at a future executive committee meeting. And I hope you will.
Commissioner Alwire.
Thank you, Commissioner Sotis-Little. I want to remind us all that Commissioner Ansoori introduced the pilot study when he was a commissioner and it was brought forth. Somehow it got reduced to just updating records. And I want to go back and see exactly what we did, but if that's all it's been reduced to, I think that was an error because that's not what the intention was at that time. So in February, I will be, we, I think we need to remember, this was a commitment we made and we need to continue our work to benefit our constituents. I know all of mine want to know, they're drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I read in the Record Eagle that abuse in Leilona County is up 140%. I don't know if anyone else have read that, but.
Domestic abuse.
Yeah, domestic abuse, sorry. And so, and that doesn't include mental health issues from people being, you know, in the lockdown or paused or, you know, or drug abuse, which, you know, so, so I don't know what we can do about it, but I've been reading this Great Barrington Declaration, I don't know if anybody else has, but it's a type of method of taking care of those who really are endangered from the coronavirus. And it's put together by etymologists, or I'm not sure how you say it, but anyway, from Stanford, Harvard, and I think it's Oxford, those three wrote this declaration. And I'm wondering, maybe we should do a resolution or something on encouraging this so that it's a way to open up in a way that's safe and reasonable. And I think there's over 4,500 doctors and medical people who have signed on to this and saying that this is a way that can be approached and that we could maybe do a resolution to encourage this rather than, you know, it can hopefully get people out of their homes one way or another, but in a safe manner. So, you know, I'm just suggesting this and if I don't get, you know, if I get some input from people, you know, maybe we can write up a resolution to encourage it.
I'm going to ask you to go ahead and write the resolution and present it to the board and we can have a discussion on it. Domestic abuse at 140% in our county is unthinkable. There's a reason people are angry and upset. They've been in lockdown for a year. It's very challenging for some people to manage the stress. So I would just like to see the resolution and then we can have a discussion.
And I'll try to get it to you then a week, at least a week before the executive committee. That way we have, you know, a chance to look. Commissioner Wessel.
And I, as well as receive a resolution, then I'd like some background material on what it's based on and what's, what data are we looking at? Is it 140% or 2%? Or is it 140%? I mean, I want to see the data and I want to see the research before, before we have discussion, if that's okay.
You're talking about in Leilona County?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm kind of sure it was quoted in there as, he said it was astronomical and that was, I'm not, I think it was the health department that put it out. I would have to ask them for it. Okay. Commissioner Sotis-Little.
That's what I was going to ask, if you could share the article that you had read and any other data that would be useful. I'd very much like to see it. Thank you so much for bringing it.
Commissioner Lotner.
Yes. I'm going to remind all of us, since we have one commissioner who specifically called out two commissioners and I guess I would quite like to know why, what that is all about. But I'm going to remind us all that we have rules, board rules, some may be new and may not understand them totally. But to drop a motion on this board, not even at the beginning of the agenda, but at the end of the agenda and expect action on it, and then further bully us on this action, I would remind you that this was, in my opinion, way more narrow than actually where we could be going. But in the first place, the first thing I would have objected to is a special session because that is not at all where we should be taking this issue. Secondly, it invites only two organizations to the table. We don't know yet what organizations we want to bring to the table. It could be more than that. And we don't know yet where those are, as I said earlier. So I just find that to be very, very disturbing. Also, as one caller was alarmed about the way last week's meeting was portrayed, I'll let him know that we had 19, 7, 0 votes. We had 19, 7, 0 votes and one split vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
Well, I want to piggyback on that because I remember when Melinda and I were at the sharing debates in Glen Arbor four, six years ago, I think. And at that time, we both said, you know, despite, and Alan Campbell was there, despite what the enterprise says, we agree on a whole lot more than we disagree. And I think we do have to keep reminding ourselves of that.
Thank you. All right, and that would bring us to approval of financials. We have some amendments and transfers here.
Yes, I would recommend approval. I would move to approve amendment number 21-001.
That's our only amendment that we have today.
We have someone's report. The board. Thank you. It is the only one that we have for as far as amendments.
For this month.
Any, any other questions? All those in favor? So go ahead, go ahead.
I would like a clarification on which one. This is one transfer, this is.
The motion is for the amendment.
Amendment number 21-001, the one with the L on.
Okay, I have a question in regards to that. There you go.
Hi.
Okay, so the revenue number is the amount of taxes that we have received from the winter taxes, is that correct?
No, that's what was on the ballot at the time that the voters voted this. So that's the number that I'm representing on the amendment to establish the budget for 2021.
Okay. And then when the revenue comes in, you're asking us to move it to the expense account?
Right now, I'm establishing this budget as I did in 2020 so that they could collect the taxes. As of December 31st, the treasurer did collect $92,233 in that early tax payments between December 1st and year end. What I plan to bring you after the tax collection and DTR pays into the fund, looking for delinquent, will be the amendment to show what was actually brought forward from 20, what he, what is actually collected. And then there will be, depending on how the fiscal expenses fall, it'll be bills paid to the health department and/or any money left over transferred back to the general fund. But I won't know that until all the taxes are collected and he usually settles in April.
So the money is held here at the county?
Yes.
It moves from the general fund into the subsidiary fund, revenue fund?
In actuality, they actually deposit right into this fund when they collect their taxes. So when the townships bring it to the treasurer, it goes right into this fund, the date of receipt. The issue is, we have supplemented ahead and so not until I know all of us collected in April, will I be able to move money between the fund, this, and the general fund.
Okay, we're going to revisit this in April.
Yep.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
So this just sets up this account?
Yes, it sets up this budget.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, sir? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. The motion passes seven zero. And that brings us then to the transfer number 21-001.
Yes, I would move to approve fund transfer 21-001.
The board. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you for that. And that brings us to claims and accounts.
I would move to approve claims and accounts $430,524.20.
The board. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign. Motion passes seven zero.
I would move to approve post-it $1,710,382.
The board. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the same sign.